Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We're going to go ahead and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you. Now, Mr. Secretary, can we please proceed with roll call, beginning with our esteemed mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor Rowan Hepkins.
Present.
President Latoya Moreau.
Present.
Vice President Leona Roadclow.
Present.
Counselor Nicole Beatty.
Present.
Counselor Antoinette Truheart.
Present.
Counselor Michael Trent.
Present.
Counselor Jesse Peet.
Present.
Counselor Lillian Johnson is not present tonight. Brianna Bryant from Kill Kenny Law, our solicitor.
Present.
Nafis Nichols, our finance director.
Present.
Elonah Hughes, our tax collector, is not present this evening. And Megan Tadaro from Pinoni Engineering is not present and will report next week.
All right. Thank you very much. We do have a forum, so we will continue. First up for public comment, I have Elizabeth Electinovas.
A couple of years ago, a Democratic Committee person filed a complaint on behalf of residents against council for violating the Sunshine Act. Seeing as council had changed, that person agreed to a settlement. The settlement was the requirement that this council be given a presentation about the Sunshine Act by the solicitor. That presentation occurred last March at a public council meeting. The Sunshine Act requires deliberations to be held at public meetings. There are very few exemptions to this requirement: litigation, buying or leasing property, certain personnel matters, that sort of thing. It had already been clear that this council had been having private discussions and pre-planning their votes outside a public meeting since the beginning of last year, despite being educated on the matter, despite criticizing the previous council for their violations, despite campaign promises to be transparent. At the last meeting, council president went so far as to make a motion to violate the Sunshine Act, and every counselor voted to do so while the solicitor sat quietly saying nothing. The motion was to table a discussion about handicap spaces to be discussed at the next executive session privately. Discussion is the very definition of deliberation. Having seven counselors violating our rights is not an improvement over four counselors doing so. Tony, you often talk about respect. Respect is not simply nice words and sitting quietly. Respect for the community would be representing our rights, and that includes our right to information. Jessie, is this the kind of counselor you intended to be? Even Carlette spoke up and did the right thing from time to time. We remember and appreciate that she refused to vote to rescind the hiring of Officer Pettyjohn. Michael, you've done nothing but support the belief that you were selected for the vacancy simply to be a yes man. Rafi, agendas are required to be sufficiently detailed for residents to understand what is being voted on. They often are not, especially when deliberations have been kept private. I filed a right-to-know request for the employment agreement between Chief Giomarco and the borough which council unanimously voted to approve in November pending the solicitor's approval. I've been told there is no record. No record was created. How exactly does a legislative body unanimously vote without a recording of what they voted for? Is this a government, or is this a speakeasy?
Well, I'm going to go with government. Next up, we have Clara Johnson.
Good afternoon to our great counselor, and to our borough manager, to our chief, and all other people here. Good afternoon. Okay. What I have to say today is that there's a problem on Bullock and Whitby Avenue with an eyesore of a property. And I just want to bring that to light to council tonight, if they don't already know about it, but to actually look into it. That's all I have to say. Good counselors.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Pizzulo.
Is that problem been rectified?
Problem is being looked into. We've known about it for about a week or so, maybe a week and a half. The weather and snow has been hampering us from getting out there, but we are well aware of it.
Can we get an ETA?
ETA within the next week.
Within the next week?
Within the next week, we'll have it abated, and the process will be started.
I'mma hold you till then.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for bringing that to our attention.
All right. Mr. Hamlin, Dorian Hamlin?
Oh, yes. It was very simple. Hi, councilmembers, everyone here. I don't know why I keep coming up here every week. I mean, every time we have a meeting, but I've had questions about, you know, my grandchild, like, you know. It's about, I don't know where a recreation center is around here in Yadeen. We have a swimming pool, talking about fixing up other things in the swimming pool area, but no rec center to play inside sports during this wintertime. And I'm just trying to figure out where that is.
So, there are organizations that do sports in the winter, and they utilize the school. So, the school does offer for about $5 per session. I know that YEAA uses it. Some other organizations have used that, but no, we don't have an actual recreation center around Yadeen, but there are things in the area for children to do also. Is the why?
No, I'm right on saying, we have a swimming pool. We have so many things. Why hasn't anyone brought up about a recreation center? That's all I'm asking.
Okay. So, we've had significant discussion about that. I'm going to direct you to either Mr. Nichols or our manager, to Mr. Nichols for the finances, and our borough manager for the history of why we may not have a recreation center here. All right. And then, can we get you to just sign your form?
Okay.
Thank you. Next up, we have our mayor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Next mayor's forum will be Thursday, March 6th. I do want to let everybody know that our flag is being flown at half-staff in honor of former President Jimmy Carter, and that will, our mandate is from the governor for all state and municipal buildings, and will be flown as such until Tuesday, January 28th. The Yadeen Police Department has initiated something that's called a bus patrol program, which its aim is to strengthen the compliance of school bus stops at no cost to the borough. It works via generated, AI-generated program that records whenever an order overtakes a school bus at stop. Cameras take a photo of the license tags and a video is sent to the police department via secure link, and a citation would then be issued to violators. This started on Monday, January 6th. And finally, we are two officers down at this time, full-time officers, and there's three that we anticipate leaving soon at the beginning of this year. And I understand that the Civil Service Commission should be ramping up the advertising for officers soon, right? Mr. Trent? Beginning of next month?
Yeah, it'll be posted, advertised, the end of this month, first of February.
Okay. End of this month, first of, okay. Beginning of next month, okay. There ends my report, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to provide some clarification regarding the allegations that were made during citizens' forum, specifically regarding handicap parking and violations of the Sunshine Act. But do believe that this council voted to table said item to get more information and background on the issue. We didn't have enough information to vote. It wasn't about collaborating or deliberating, because that is not something this council has ever done or would ever do, but we were responsible enough not to cast a blind vote for something that we didn't have any information about. So, to allow us to gather some more background on the subject is what we did. It was not any violation of the Sunshine Act. And Ms. Bryant, if you were present for this vote, did you, do you have any issue? Are you able to speak to it at all?
Yes, thank you. I agree that council tabled the vote to gather more information. As the residents spoke about, yes, council cannot speak in executive session beyond the limitations or the exceptions that are permitted. And if council would like to speak, ask to get more information and to review it privately and with themselves, they are allowed to do so, and then come into council to discuss it openly with the public.
Additionally, some of the information regarding handicap parking does have to do with property concerns, and property concerns are something that we are permitted to discuss in executive session. Next, we will move on to our solicitor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. Our office is working, is looking forward to a successful and productive new year as your solicitor. Our office is currently engaging in defending the borough in active litigation, appearing on behalf of the borough for summary code violations, appeals with the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas, looking into the Yadeen Code to modify or expand the definitions of nuisances and/or eyesores to ensure better compliance with the Yadeen Borough Code, as well as we are responding to subpoena notices of borough officials. So, those are just some of the things we are working on, but if anyone has any questions, I am available to answer any.
All right. Thank you for your report. Next up, I guess, Mr. Nichols, are you handling the tax collector? Or are we deferring that until the next meeting?
I'll give an update. Mr. Cave and I are working on an assessment and analysis of the tax office. We're currently working to ensure that the 2024 books are closed and reconciled, and we're currently working to take care of the 2025 pre-tax work that needs to be done in order for bills to be timely out to residents by February 1st.
All right. Thank you very much. Our engineer's report will be next week. Our engineer isn't here this evening. So, next we will move on to our finance report.
Me again, okay. So, right now, currently planning to present, if, well, I'm sure you guys would allow me, at the February caucus meeting, a year-in review for 2024 fiscal year. Next week, I will be asking for consideration for an APVIS cash balance report as well, and the finance department is currently working on the Penn dot 965 report, and all state mandated reports that are due in January for the borough. There ends my report.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have ordinance and zoning.
Good evening, everyone. I've included the code report for December with a recap of the property maintenance abatements for the entire 2024, as well as our, listed our violations, citations, court appearances, inspections, and permits issued for the month of December. We have, the department wrote 76 violations, 28 citations, zero court appearances in December, and performed 40 inspections and issued 37 permits for the month of December. One recent concern from our snowstorm, we had a few properties that did not address the snow and ice immediately. We did issue 11 violations for those properties, and with inspection, the next-day inspection, there were two of those 11 that still had the ice that were still out there, including this morning. So, today is the date that we'll issue citations for those. And yeah, we have a 24-hour requirement to, once the snow is done falling, to address any snow and ice off of the properties that's residential and commercial. And don't forget, shared driveways as well. That's really important. I enclosed, I included the ordinance out over on the table, if anybody wants to read it any deeper. That's all I have, Madam President.
Madam President.
Madam Vice President.
How was the borough addressing the shared driveways being shoveled?
Well, we will have to adjust it as prescribed in the code to go out and write violations when appropriate, and then follow up with citations within the time limits. That would be the, that would be the way, that would be the power that the code department has.
So, are, is that issue being addressed, the shared driveways?
We didn't get out there today. We are down a person. We did, we have an uptick in our inspections, but tomorrow, we will get, we'll be able to prioritize the shared driveways tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that the end of the report?
Yes.
Okay. At what point do we abate the situation? Because that sounds like it's a dangerous situation. We are now three days after the storm with ice, and at what point do you drive your truck down there with all the salt? When does that happen?
Good question.
Really good question. If we abate the whole driveway, every resident with salt, that's a discussion we should have, absolutely.
And that's a discussion that should have been had, so. We'll head. Okay. So, by tomorrow afternoon, I'd like someone, by afternoon, I mean, 11:59 a.m. I'd like someone to have a response to Vice President Roadclow, and have a plan of what we're going to do, because we can't just leave that situation. That's a danger for everyone. Okay?
Well, Madam Chair, if the issue has not been addressed to date, without a citation being issued, you can't abate until after that.
If, I'm just saying that if we have to do it on our own dime to maintain safety and security within the borough, then we may have to do that. But either way, if you're not going to cite, then it's still, it can't just.
No. What I'm saying is that you have to cite first.
So, when I say abate, I mean, just handle the problem. May not necessarily go back to everyone, but I understand what the process is.
Oh, okay, okay.
But abate is then take care of the issue, not take care of the issue and charge the residents. But we can't just leave the.
Right.
We can't just leave the situation that way for someone to fall, because we fail to hold people accountable. Okay? All right. 11:59 a.m. Next, we do have public works.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Few announcements. We have our e-waste drop-off, January 31st, between 8:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. A new announcement, we have a shredder event this week, Saturday, January 11th, sponsored by the Waihee DC at the Gunther Avenue Parking Lot. It was a rain or shine. I'd like to amend that as rain shine or snow event. The gas restoration project has been completed on McDay Boulevard. It has been brought up to restoration phase. The next phase will be repaving McDay Boulevard, 900 block. At least half of the street will be paved from Church Lane to West Cops Creek Parkway, and then West Cops Creek Parkway will be paved from Chester Avenue to Cypress Street. There's been some painting and improvements in the barrel hall. You might notice the police lobby has been painted. We're going to start moving forward in all their lobby, third floor, and the auditorium. Let's go back to McDay Boulevard, between Church and West Cops Creek Parkway. The one-way do-not-enter signs will be installed for the one-way directional change on McDay Boulevard. It should be mid-February. This will all take place. Letters will be handed out and delivered to residents on these blocks to let them know the progress of what is going on in these streets. What else we have here? Okay. And we will have an answer for you before 12 o'clock tomorrow afternoon. Any questions for anybody else?
No, I just, I do have a question. This was a small storm, and, you know, we're also a small borough. So, was there a collaboration meeting to assess how we, or do we have standard operating procedures for addressing storms?
Storms.
Snowstorm.
Yes, per storm, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So, in that procedure, do we have outlined when people, when, you know, I heard that 24 hours from when the snow stops falling is when it needs to be cleared. Do we have what happens next, and then what happens if it fails? Because I just feel like, you know, this is Thursday. This is way, this was way too long, and this was a smaller storm. So, in the event that there's a larger one, I want to make sure that we have all of those standard operating procedures in place, that we will know how to handle a larger.
Exactly. Now, as in public works standards, we are streets, we are parking lots, and any better facilities. Driveways are another collaboration between myself and the code department. This was a deep freeze, too. This turned into, a little bit of snow turned into a sheet of ice. So, it's a different situation. When it comes to snow, snow's different than when we get a deep freeze and everything just never leaves us. So, yes, there's something we need to, you know, step up a little bit with the code, public works, and driveway situations, a lot of driveways, just as many streets as driveways, almost twice as many.
So, that also means, you know, coming up with the operating procedure, the people who have shared driveways, maybe putting, you know, sending, giving them a reminder in their doors, you know, what to do after a storm, things like that. If we could have a flyer or something, something posted on our website.
I think education.
I just feel like we need to, you know, educate and be more proactive to prevent any other catastrophes from occurring.
Absolutely.
Right? That can happen after 12 o'clock, but before 12 o'clock.
Before 12 o'clock, you get your answer. Okay, great. Thank you.
Let's have our borough's report.
That is my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have public safety. Chief Giomarco, looks like some other people are here to take a shine. I'm telling what she said about the fire department.
Yeah, there's four of them, so I gotta, live rolling. As long as I'm rolling, I'm good. He's my Kevin Costner in this show. Good evening, all, and happy new year. The police department in December responded to 881 calls for service. There was one criminal arrest in the month of December. We had two non-traffic citations issued for disorderly conduct and harassment. There was four tickets issued. We issued 981 parking tickets. And just some announcements, Tuesday, January 21st, from 6:00 to 7:00 at the library, we'll be having, I'll be there for just a Q and A. It's kind of just an open forum. Anyone wants to come, it's going to be an open forum for the residents. As the mayor pointed out, we started bus patrol. It went live on January 6th. I explained at last meeting, it's this new AI technology that's on the buses, so if an individual overtakes the bus while the arm's out, it'll take a video, and it'll take still photographs, and it'll be emailed securely to the police department. We'll review it, hit yes, and they'll issue the citation. It's no cost to the borough. And just something, and.
And how much of a citation?
It's $300 if you overtake a bus.
A school bus.
A school bus, yeah. You overtake a school. If SEPTA got into it, it would be pretty good, too, because people overtake the SEPTA buses all the time, unfortunately. And I'm going to use, I apologize for the vernacular, I'm going to use my Philly knees here, just so everyone understands, there's no savesies. What a savesies is in Philly terminology is, I understand you're out there shoveling your snow. We all go through, but don't put, you know, the chairs out there, and don't put garbage bags in the street, don't put cones. If you're missing cones, chairs, you might find them at public works, because if we see them on the street, we're taking them up. And I understand, like, we've all lived in row homes, that you shovel it out, but there's no savesies. You don't own the street, so. That's sort of my emergency management there, so.
No trash bags, no toilets.
No Elvis heads, no Elvis heads, no trash bags, no toilets. Yeah, no mattresses, no children that you don't like leaving out there.
I've definitely seen trash bags and toilets.
Yes. That ends my reports.
All right. Are you going to put on your emergency management hat now?
That's part of the savesies, so that's emergency management. Yeah, that's.
All right. So, you'll be a part of the meeting, though, with code and the borough manager to discuss the safety plan.
And I'll have like four alarms on my phone. Like, I'll have an 11:00 a.m., then I'll have like 11:15, 11:20, and 11:49 to make sure by 11:59 someone's calling you.
I appreciate you. You're calling Council Roadclow.
Okay, well, yeah. So, yeah, yeah, yep.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Fire department?
Well, fire department's here, obviously.
Yep, that's what he says every time.
It's all good.
Tells us you're napping.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. Want to introduce myself. My name is Shaheed Summers. I'm the Yadeen Borough's Fire Chief. I'm just going to give a brief report on the month of December. The Yadeen Fire Company responded to a total of 85 emergencies. Thirty-two of those emergencies was in the borough of Yadeen. That brings us at a total of 1,149 incidents on a year, 780 of those emergencies being in the borough of Yadeen. The month of December, we had one work instruction fire located at the 700 block of West Cops Creek. There were no extensions to any other residents on that street, no injuries to fire personnel, and no injuries to any residents also. And that concludes my report for this year.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming out.
Introduce. And I also want to introduce the Borough of Yadeen Fire Marshal, Vinnie Zapacosta.
Okay. Ken McCollum?
Happy New Year, everyone. I'm Vinnie Zapacosta. I'll be the new fire marshal, so I appreciate council for giving me the opportunity to serve you guys and the residents here. If there's anything I can do for anybody, I'm newer to the position. I've only been doing it for a short period of time outside of Yadeen. I also served Norwood Borough, which I grew up in. I've been in the fire service with these guys for the last 15 years, so I have a little bit of a background in it. But anything I can do to make the residents here safer, anything I can do to answer your questions. Outside of that, I went out in December with Shaheed and them to the fire, helped them with that previously. So, I'll make myself available as much as I can. Again, if there's any questions, reach out to us. Talked to Rafi earlier. We were having a little bit of a discussion, so moving forward, I'll have more of a report format, but we'll also talk, you know, with it being winter, December, January, and February, the three busiest months for fires, home fires. The deadliest for those home fires are caused by, like, heating elements, space heaters, improperly stored heaters, not cleaned heaters, fireplaces not being taken care of. So, if you have any of those things at home, make sure you're taking care of that. Space heaters should be kept away from anything, any type of materials. If they're older, I would suggest getting rid of them. The newer ones are a lot safer. They have tipping features and things like that. The older kerosene ones are no good, and things like that, so. Moving forward, if there's anything I can do for anybody, please reach out. Rafi had already gotten me issued an email address, so that's firemarshal@yadenborough.com, or if anybody has any other questions, they can reach out to him. He has my contact info. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
I actually have a question. I think I asked this before about the fire department handing out carbon monoxide detectors, if they are doing that with the residents.
Do you, have you guys? Yeah.
So, yes, that's something I've been trying to work on throughout last year, and I'm going to continue to try to work on that this year. We don't, as the fire company, provide carbon dioxide and smoke detectors, and I'm trying to work with the Red Cross to do that. They will come in and install and monitor the smoke detectors, but as of right now, they do not hand out carbon dioxide detectors as of yet. So, it is something I'm trying to, you know, work with the Red Cross and get in the residents of Yadeen, smoke detectors and carbon dioxide detectors. And once I have that available, I'll have a sign-up sheet for every resident to sign up, and it will come out and install it for them.
Oh, so, we used to give out the smoke detectors, but we're no longer doing that.
So, the previous fire. And once I have that available, I will have a sign-up sheet for every resident to sign up, and they will come out and install it for them.
Also, we used to give out the smoke detectors, but we're no longer doing that.
So the previous fire marshal, he did go to the Philadelphia Fire Academy and got a handful of smoke detectors and was giving them out to senior residents in the borough. So that's something that I would like to see, you know, our new fire marshal will continue to do.
Okay. Just the senior residents, not the younger ones?
He only had, he only had a.
Fire's fire, I would say.
Yeah, he, he only got a handful, so he had to, I guess, choose who he was handing out to.
Chief Summers, I'll get with you tomorrow, it came across my desk a week ago, there's a, that grant is available for volunteer and paid fire departments now. You guys may know him, Slay?
Yes.
You know Slay?
Yes.
We'll engage Slay, he has a 98% grant award capacity, so we'll get him to write that grant for us to get there.
Okay, that's my intention. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I can also add.
That's my department, but I'm the president of the fire company, my name is Ethan Simmons.
Mr. Simmons, we, Mr. Simmons, how you doing? We're being recorded, so if you wouldn't mind stepping to the mic?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Only reason I said something, because that was my department, or what do you need from us on the presidential and executive side for that grant?
Well, I just connected with Mr. Slay.
Okay. Cool, no problem.
Slay Darren Slay?
I don't think so.
Come on, sir, you off track. I'm sorry, Mr. Simmons, our mayor is a distraction sometimes.
That's all right. And this is my first year, I have been with the fire company for 15 years or so, but this is my very first year serving that office as president.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
I'll, I'll add real quick to your question about carbon monoxide detectors and smoke detectors. The program the chief spoke about was partnered with Philadelphia Fire Department and ABC, and last year and the year previously, they, they kind of cut funding to that. So they drastically reduced the number of smoke detectors they gave out to departments, and then instead of offering all the previous departments those smoke detectors like they have in the past, they decided they were only going to email a major, like, some of those. So a lot of the local municipalities kind of got cut out of that, even though they didn't realize they did that. So this year, Red Cross is a good asset, I'll meet with the chief and see what we can do to bring those back in, but it was a very small number, I would, I would like to see that continue and for all residents, if possible, so we can come up with some, some discussions on that further, but furthermore, the residents who are living in rental properties and stuff, that's up to their landlord, and that's what most burrows and townships are doing, is they'll provide those for the residents who are paying taxes specifically. If they have to in an emergency, they'll, they'll hand that, but ultimately, it's up to the landlords, too, to make sure of that. And when the code department and myself go out, we'll make sure that they're handling them, and they're in the, and functioning.
Madam President.
Madam Chair, if I could just make a suggestion, that with, because you get, you all give out a lot of good information, and particularly, I think it would be helpful for the fire department to hold some, you know, like the mayor does a forum, the fire department to hold some sessions to invite the residents and give this information out, so we're making sure a wide range of our residents are aware of this.
We don't think we're.
And that way, they would also get to know who you are, because a lot of residents don't.
Madam President, Mr. Zapacosta is also emergency management certified, so he'll be supporting Chief Giamarcos' emergency management department as well.
Very good.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much. Mr. Summers, you might want to check with the mayor, he might be able to offer you a time slot at his mayor's forum.
I was actually thinking about that. So you beat me with a punch.
You ought to be nice to him, though. All right.
All right. March 6th, we could schedule you to be the main presentation at the mayor, the next mayor's forum.
Okay, March 6th, yes, that's fine.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have our planning commission.
So yes, I can speak to, give an update on that. So we just recently had a resignation of one of our members who, you know, life happens to everybody, who now has family members that have to be attended to, so we'll not give him the time to devote. So we do have a vacancy, so what we will be doing is advertising it so that we can receive resumes from residents who may be interested, so that we can then review them and then recommend who we would like to, you know, appoint to, to fill that position, but also, to also look at having some folks who would be available if something should happen to one of the members, that we could call upon them to come in as well, so some alternates we would also like to look at in addition to the main appointee to that commission. So you should be seeing that advertisement, and Mr. Cave, that'll be posted on the website and with the instructions on how to submit your resume. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair? Madam Vice President? Thanks. Is there a deadline?
So I would like, Mr. Cave, can that be put on the website tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Would you like to make the decision by next, by the legislative?
I would love to be able to make the decision as soon as possible, so if we could give, if it goes on the website tomorrow, if we could then give till Wednesday.
You got it.
Deadline to submit, so then we would have an opportunity to take them and review them.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Ms. Bryant, for recreation?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to mention that this board met in executive session before the meeting to discuss personnel issues.
And legal issues.
As well as legal matters as well, litigation.
Thank you. Next up, we have recreation.
Good evening, everyone. So Mr. Hunter had a field trip today to the farm show, so that's why he's not here. I'm sure he's exhausted and probably still thawing out from today, so hopefully, they had a good time. I just want to talk a little bit about our meeting we had January 7th, which was this past Tuesday. We are in the process of planning Flag Day, as I mentioned last month, and we are excited. So we are going to do some things differently this year, we're moving it back to Long Anchor Boulevard, yay! We are, we are moving it back to Long Anchor Boulevard, so we are going to probably have Flag Day from West Cops Creek all the way down to Church Lane, one big long situation. We are still going to have the fireworks at, that's if Dr. B. Coats and Mr. Deans from the school district give me the permission to have the fireworks, which I believe they will. So I'm meeting with the school district after they get back to me with a date, and also, so I was approached by the NAO Swim Club Board to see if we could partner with them regarding the Juneteenth event, so whatever that means. We're going to have a meeting to see what the NAO would like from the borough. I already let them know I will not have the mental bandwidth to plan two events in one week, that's not going to happen, but we can definitely sit down and talk about what we can do to assist the NAO. One of my visions for that event is that we open it to the public and let it be a free event for Yaden residents that are also non-members of the NAO, so I'll talk to them about that as well, and possibly maybe talking along with our borough manager about having it at community parks, so we'll see what happens. But we are excited, we got a lot of things coming up this year, and please stay tuned. More information to come. Oh, I should give Mr. Hunter's report also. So the registration for Camp Garrett is opening soon, he said that they will offer scholarships for families in need, and employment opportunities for youth counselors and staff members. For more information, visit their website or call them at 610-353-7690. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you so much. Madam Chair? Just a quick question, when are the calendars for the year going out?
They should be here, they should be in your mailboxes about next week or the week after next. That's typically when they come out. We are going to do something a little different next year, hopefully, they should be able to insert it, to have the January for the following year in, because it seems that they always land at residents' homes about the third week of January. The thing, I always reiterate that this is a free resource to our community, because we do fundraiser. We were waiting for updated logos from those sponsors who paid for the calendar for the residents, that was one of the major delays.
Okay. Yeah, I was just a little disappointed, because I missed a few meetings, I didn't have a calendar. You ain't missed no meetings.
I just had a comment for Councilor Beatty, so I know that the folks from Lansdowne had approached me if they would be interested in working during a joint Juneteenth celebration with the community, so I suggested that they reach out to you, but now that you're saying the NAO, you know, that would be good to maybe.
Well, I'm going to put them in contact with the NAO, because that's their event, but if you have contact.
But I'll share the information with you.
Yeah, and I will forward it, so when I meet with the NAO board, I can also share that information, so that could be something we could do.
Something that could be.
Yeah, especially if we're doing it in the park.
Right.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So without further ado, a request for this meeting to be adjourned. Meeting's adjourned.